We're good to go. Okay, good evening and welcome to the 6:00 PM Special City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 12th, 2021. Let the roll call reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Stevens, who has asked to be excused. And just for note, Councilmember Nadolski and Councilmember Lopez will be joining us electronically. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance offered by Vice Chair White.
Thank you. Please stand if you are able and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. We would now ask that you join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. First on the agenda, we have a recognition. Sarah Tolliver, recognizing President and CEO of Visit Ogden, Sarah Tolliver. We arm wrestled for this and Vice Chair White won, so she gets to read this and present this to you. So we'll turn it over to Vice Chair White.
Thanks Chair Player. I did get to, I did win on this one. You know, why am I nervous? Gosh.
You want me to take over for you?
Yeah, I'm got it. The Ogden City Council and Mayor proudly recognize Sarah Tolliver for her invaluable contributions and service to the Ogden community. As the President and CEO, and I'm going to throw grand master and greatest of all time of Visit Ogden, Sarah Tolliver embodies the Ogden spirit and demonstrates a strong sense of community pride. She has influenced our community through her leadership, stewardship, and destination management. Because of her significant contributions and influence with Ogden City's tourism industry, Sarah was inducted into the 2021 Utah Tourism Hall of Fame. Sarah is a catalyst for the betterment of the Ogden community. She has served on various boards and committees and is an advocate for tourism, arts, and small businesses. She works tirelessly to promote Ogden's vision as a safe, healthy, high-adventure destination, offering one-of-a-kind outdoor recreation and metropolitan opportunities. Through her passion and drive, Sarah has helped Ogden City transform and evolve into a world-class destination for both residents and tourists. We are grateful for Sarah's dedication and commitment to Ogden City and congratulate her for her tremendous honor. We know, we know she will continue to do many great things in the years to come. With that, I present to you on this 12th day of October, this recognition.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Sarah. Bring your family up.
I didn't say it quite as nice as Shane does, but maybe we should again do it.
Do you want to bring your family? Yeah.
Well, thank you. It doubles the honor of receiving this recognition. You know, it seems like an induction or a recognition like this tends to be upon someone's retirement or at the end of their career. And I, so when I got the call from the Utah Tourism Industry Association that I was being recognized with this, I actually said, is this a hint that it's time for me to move on? And, and I'm going to hold on to hope that it's not because I love what I do and where I get to do it. And I feel like I still have a lot to give to this community. So, um, I really don't know what else I can say, but thank you. I do want my team, Shane is here. And they are the ones that nominated me for this award with the support of some of our board members. And I think there's just absolutely no higher acclaim than being recognized by your team for your leadership. And they, they get to see the best and the worst of me. So the fact that they still felt I was worthy of this means more than they will ever know. And thank you to all of you, to the council and the administration, the mayor. It's, you know, it's really interesting in our industry. There's a lot of conversation at industry conferences about making sure that the visitor economy has a seat at the table. And that is one thing I have never felt like I've had to fight for or has been an issue in this community. I appreciate the acknowledgement of the impact the visitor economy has on our community and of our position in making that happen. And I just want to thank you for allowing us to have that voice at the table and to all of you for making this the incredible place to work, live, and visit that it is and letting us at Visit Ogden play our role in making this community such an amazing place. So thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, may I make a comment? I just wanted to say that I really, you know, appreciate your work so much, Sarah. And one of my very first memories of first getting on the council was getting an email from Sarah to say, I need to meet with you right now to tell you how important the work we're doing is here. And I really appreciate that. As a new council member, you don't often, you know, get that kind of invitation from different organizations. And so it was really a great introduction into the great work that you do at Visit Ogden, but also to really understand, you know, the passion and get that contagion and that love for Ogden too. So, thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
I also would like to make a comment. I was the council representative on the CBB board for a while until Marcia decided I didn't need to be there anymore.
You won again.
That was, yeah, that was against my, my desires however. But I, but I gotta say that Sarah is brilliant and well-deserving of this. She is very engaged and, and does a great job representing our community. She's a great ambassador. She's smart. She, she gets a lot more done with the money that you get. I'm very impressed by how, how you're really pretty affordable for us. So thank you so much for the work you do for us. Well, there, let's have a discussion.
I'll go and you can go last.
Oh, no.
One of my earlier memories, earliest, not earliest, but earlier memories was I, I too was on the CBB board until I guess Councilmember Hayer thought I should be off of it, so.
It wasn't my decision that time.
But I was on there and I remember, I believe it was Kim Bouchard had, who had just, you guys had just gone away to a conference or somewhere and she'd come back. And it was one of my first board meetings and she just raved about how respected, how well-spoken, how much of a leader, and, and how great of an ambassador Sarah is for our community and how, how respected she is amongst that group and how much she gets done here and with others and how outspoken she is for this community and her passion, her love for this community. And it sparked an interest. It made me want to like follow her and watch her and see what she does. And it's true. Every, every bit of it is true. She is one of our greatest cheerleaders, one of our greatest ambassadors, and she's someone that I truly am thankful that she's in our community. And she's one of our own and I totally respect her and respect everything she does. So, thank you for what you do.
Is that because she went to Ogden High?
That helps.
Well, that didn't, maybe it wasn't the thing, but, but instead, but in spite of it least.
You know, Sarah, I think that everybody has said what I would say, but I just want to say that I don't know how you have managed to get 30 hours in a day where we only get 24. And your love, not just for Ogden, but your love for your family and your friends is definitely felt every time we're around you. And thank you for welcoming into us, into your family and your friends as well. So, thank you for everything that you are doing and, and gosh, it better not be your retirement, so.
Thank you.
Attaboy to Shane too.
Thank you.
No, you don't have to leave. You can if you want.
Next up, we have a request to be on the agenda. The Weber State University's Division of Student Affairs, and we have Dr. Enrique Romo here in person this time. So we welcome you up.
Good evening, everyone. Buenas tardes. I just wanted to have a quick moment to thank each and every single one of you here, especially our students who are sitting back here. Without them, we wouldn't be here today. I know we do a lot of great work. We have an amazing leader, President Mortensen also, who's showing us the way on how, what it means to be bold and courageous, especially when we talk about the changing times, especially in higher education and some of the challenges that our students are going through, right? So I think for us, being here with you today to acknowledge some of the work that we do and to make sure that, you know, that yes, higher education is complicated, is hard, is difficult for a lot of people who maybe look like me, that people who have had different challenges, whether it's economic challenges, the first ones in their families to go to school, whether it's a language barrier as well, even some of our community members, some of them who have or might have immigration status issues as well. So we want to make sure that we, we want to make sure that our community knows that we are here to support and to help and that when it talks, when we come, when we talk about education, we want to make sure that everyone gets the same message, that we are here to give them that opportunity to fully realize their, their own definition of success. So I just wanted to take a few moments here to, to, to address you all and to thank you for the work that you're doing. And also, I don't know the formalities in terms of the next steps for the proclamation, but I also, I don't know if I need to do that now or I need to wait until that is presented.
We've got it here for you.
Right. No, but I just don't know if there's anything like some formalities that I need to do on my end?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Well, then, if that's the case, because I know that we did this last time and I was online. So thank you again for doing that. But, but again, I just wanted to make sure that, to let everyone know here in the community, here, the people who are present here, that receiving this proclamation from the city for the work that we do with our Hispanic or Latinx community and what it means for us, to our students, to our staff, and everyone who works with our students. The work that we do, as I mentioned, is not easy and a lot of times it goes unnoticed. Yet, we do it with pride because we know that we are changing students' lives for the better. And we get them to fully realize their own definition of success. We've, as an institution, have engaged in a different trajectory and our own vision of what the university should be in the future. We are now engaged in becoming an emerging Hispanic-serving institution. And that pretty much really, there's a whole lot of definitions of what that means. But to pretty much just tell you in brief words what it is, is that we are hoping, we will work to become an emerging serving institution by the year 2025. And that means getting our student body population who identifies as Hispanic or Latino to 15% in the next four years. That is the first step in our path to becoming a fully-fledged Hispanic-serving institution. And that means that we will become, we will have 25% of our student body population identify as Hispanic or Latino. Once we get to that designation, we will have access to federal funding under Title V from the Department of Education to provide more services and opportunities for Latino students, but not just our Latino students on campus, but everybody else. Because as we know, if one group of, if one group of students benefit, all the other students benefit as well. So I just wanted to make sure to do that. And also, speaking of bold moves, we have an announcement that we would like to make. And this is the first time we'll announce it publicly. So I'll ask President Mortensen to come in and share that with us because it is amazing.
Thank you, Dr. Romo. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here two weeks in a row. And I want to interrupt the great presentation from Dr. Romo and our students if we didn't have some exciting news that we wanted to share. And that is that as we've adopted this goal to become an emerging Hispanic-serving institution, to really help meet the needs of our community and, and to close the gaps that exist currently in higher education across the country, across Utah, but specifically at Weber State. We know that that's something we need to do and have fully incorporated that into our strategic plan for the next five years, as Dr. Romo said. But as we have started down this path, only in the last few months, we've been very fortunate through the leadership of our Board of Trustees and some connections that they have made with industry leaders to be announcing tonight that Ally Bank, which is a leading industrial and digital banking company that has offices in the state, has agreed to sponsor our Emerging Hispanic Serving Institution initiative. They'll be providing us $500,000 over the next five years to help us have the resources to really take all of the programs that we're doing to the next level so that we can reach out and serve our Hispanic/Latinx community here in the greater Ogden area. So we really appreciate their generous support and leadership and that. And our, they wanted to share that in as much as it's still Hispanic Heritage Month and share that with the city council, ask me to do that because you're such great partners in all of this work with us. So we're very pleased with that. There will be a more formal press release forthcoming in the next couple of days, but wanted to share that news with you this evening. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So you know we're serious, right? Because now there's money behind it. But now I'd like to make sure that I invited some of our students to come here and share a little bit of their experience and what it means for them to be a student at Weber State University. And because we're celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, some of our Hispanic students and what it means for them to be here and to be representing their community. Please make sure that we'll give them a little bit of grace. They're a little bit nervous. I've been coaching them and I've been talking with them about, you know, this is a friendly crowd. And, you know, we're definitely, you know, just committed to hearing and wanting to hear from them because this is our future right here. And we need to make sure that we pay attention to their experiences and what it is that they're going through and how we can support them. So I'll ask our current Hispanic Senator to come in first. Her name is Stephanie Vasquez.
Good afternoon. Buenas tardes. Ogden City Council, thank you for the proclamation. It's recognitions like this that help our Latino community feel welcome and included, most importantly. I am Stephanie Vasquez, Weber State Student Association's Hispanic Senator for 2021-2022. It is my fourth year at Weber State University where my major is Radiologic Sciences and I am, sorry, I'm minoring in localization. I'm also an Ogden native, so I can attest it's recognitions like this that make Ogden feel more inclusive for all of us. Weber State University has declared itself to be a Hispanic emerging community by 2025, where the goal is to have at least 15% of the student body consist of Hispanic students. As the 2021-2022 Hispanic Senator, it is acts like this that make us feel like we are actually trying to increase that current number of Hispanic students from 11% to 15% by 2025. Thank you again for the proclamation.
Thank you. So I'm going to go down the list real quick. I don't know who's comfortable now, but either Letizia, Guadalupe, Fernando, whoever wants to come in. If the spirit moves you, please come join us. Letizia, from our Ballet Folclorico. And Guadalupe Garcia.
Hello, everyone. My name is Letizia Mata and I'm Guadalupe Garcia. Today, we just want to say thank you so much for this recognition. It really means a lot to us as Hispanic students at Weber State. We really appreciate this recognition. And I just want to share a little bit about what we do at Weber State and about Hispanic Heritage Month. So, all the Hispanic student groups that we were staying, Hispanic Area Council, that we were staying Ballet Folclorico, with the support of the Center for Multicultural Excellence, Access and Diversity in Student Affairs with President Mortensen. We have hosted different events throughout the Hispanic Heritage Month. And I just want to say that all this is like student-based plans because we want, in the future, to become or have more people be aware of our traditions or heritage and not only celebrating with Hispanic students, but also having you all celebrate with us and the meaning of who we are and where we come from as a community and share these traditions with you guys.
I just want to say thank you again for inviting us here, you know? This is very special to me because as a first-generation student, it's kind of rough to fit in, you know? But things like this really do make me feel included, not only me, but like my community, the Hispanic community. So thank you guys so much for this recognition.
Thank you. So I know we also have our former student Senator, Hispanic Student Senator Julio Otaí. And we also have an alum. Otaí, and we also have an alum, Abelardo Saucedo. So I don't know if you all want to share a few words. Come on up. Absolutely. Yes. He's one of our alums. Abelardo Saucedo.
Sounds a little weird. Thank you. So I'm not officially on the agenda, but last week I did get a chance to connect with Michiko. It had been a number of years since we had spoken, and it was really good. And I do know a few people here, including President Mortensen, because when I was at Weber, I think you became the president shortly after. And so just a couple of things I wanted to say that, related to what they've talked about in terms of the proclamation, and also just the efforts ongoing to help a lot of Hispanic students in the community. I, you know, a lot of the times we say, well, there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes and that nobody knows about, but to people like us, like myself, it means the world. Because I came here when I was 14, I couldn't speak any English. Depending on the day, a lot of the times I still can't speak it. But I said to Michiko, I initially met Michiko when I was about 16 years old at Ogden High School. And I had been told a few years prior to that, that if I wanted to go to college, that I would have to figure it out. There was gonna be no help for me, because, you know, I mean, my family, I know that they couldn't, they couldn't afford it. So they said, go to school, but figure it out, right? And what they don't tell you is that a lot of the times, there is a number of steps that you have to take before you get there. But if you don't know the steps, and if you're a first-generation student and your family doesn't know the steps, then how do you cross that bridge? And so Michiko, actually, I met her, like I said, at Ogden High School. She helped me get my first job in high school as a bank teller. I don't know why they hired me, because honestly, I could not, I could not speak, but they hired me, and I'm grateful for that. Michiko took me shopping, she bought me a tie, she bought me a t-shirt, she bought me, I mean, the whole outfit. She trained me for the interview, and I think I memorized all the answers, because everything they asked me, it was a memorized answer. But that got me the job. Then fast forward about five or six years, I was a direct beneficiary from the Multicultural Student Center at Weber, from Education Access and Outreach, from the Hispanic Area Council. I was a member of it. Then I became a student body vice president at Weber State as well. And so through that, I was able to become what, you know, the little that I've become today. But again, it is because of programs like the ones that are offered, that help students like myself, that have the desire and the intention, and that a lot of the times, it just takes one person to say, hey, you know, let me show you how you get there. And that makes a whole world of a difference. So I'm extremely grateful for, again, those programs, for Michiko, and then for people like yourselves that provide that support to the community that is very, very needed, because that can make, I mean, that's the difference between being on this side versus this side. I mean, it means everything. And so now, I work for a software company based out of, well, the Bay Area, but we have an office in Salt Lake, and I'm a solution consultant, where all I get to do now, I just started, actually, I was doing a different role, but all I get to do now is presentations. And so, again, I'm grateful for your support, and mainly for their support, and Michiko for, just for what they've done, and now for allowing me to get up here and share a couple of things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? And Michiko, I know that you're here too, and I want to make sure that I acknowledge you as well. She's our Director for the Center for Multicultural Excellence. Would you at least stand up, Michiko, so we know who you are? There you go. See? And again, I just don't want to take more of your time, but I thought it was important for you to hear from some of our students, what they've gone through, their lived experiences, and what it means to them to be a student, and how attached and connected they are to Weber State, because it has been transformational for a lot of our students. So I know that, you know, I think a lot of us kind of go on, we have a lot of things going on every day, but I want you to, like, I want to leave a challenge, I think, for you as we kind of close this part of the presentation, just to, like, think about how, now that you know about our intention and our work to become an emerging Hispanic serving institution, how can the city of Ogden help us accomplish that goal, right? How can we have those types of conversations to make sure that we achieve that goal? And then also, not just to that 15%, which we could actually get there in about four years, but what if we could get there sooner, right? What if we get to that 25%? What could that look, what could that look like for us here in northern Utah, right? No other institution in Utah of higher education is being as bold as we are, because we see the future, and we know that the future is here. And the future, whether we like it or not, is brown, right? And we need to make sure that we attend to those issues, because that is what we need to do as a community. So thank you so much for your work, for your commitment to helping every community member here in Ogden. I've been, I consider myself an Ogdenite. I've been here six years now. I moved from Texas, as most of you know. So, you know, but again, Austin is a whole different world. But I, this is my home now, and this is where I'm committed to making an impacting, affecting, positive change for our students, for our community, for people in higher education K through 12. It starts with all of us being together, pushing in the same direction. So by acknowledging the work that we do here, I think that is not just a significant first step, but it also paves the way for the work that we have to engage in as a community. So thank you for the recognition. Thank you for the work that you do. And let us know how we can help, because we know that we can't just do it alone. It takes a whole community to uplift every single one of us. So thank you so much.
Dr. Romo, we've got the proclamations. We're gonna invite everyone up here. Is it coming to picture? I don't do this. See you tomorrow again.
I know.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
They need to like warm us. Yeah. Make a little line.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, let's get a picture with everybody.
Now find your window. You get a little cozy. All right. Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's good. Sorry if I'm in your face. Okay. Looking here, one, two, three. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Gary, have a church thing here.
All right. We can hear one, two, three. One, two, three. Two, one. Good. We're good. And also, for the six students, we have, yeah, we have some, yeah.
Bling.
Swag.
Swag. Yeah.
I don't know how to translate swag.
Chair?
Yes.
Is there a way to make some comments before our guests leave?
Sure, sure. We have Councilmember Lopez, he's joining us remotely, but he'd like to make some comments before you all. Sure.
Hi, Luis.
Hey, Enrique. Hi. I just wanted to thank you for coming tonight. I wanted to apologize that I couldn't be there in person. I had to travel for work, and, but I want to thank Enrique for reaching out to me and figuring out a way to include the work, the great work that is happening at Weber State, and to share it here at the City Council. I want to thank the students that came. You are truly rock stars. I can relate to your stories. When I came from Mexico, when I was 19 years old, I didn't speak English either. I immigrated from Mexico to the US in 1997. I went to Weber State and graduated from Weber State University with my teaching degree. And I've been blessed by, I've been blessed by having jobs that allow me to be in contact with the community and with my culture. And so I just want to really applaud you for being here. It almost brings me to tears to see what's happening, to see the work that Weber State University is doing. It's not easy work, but nothing good is easy. We all know that. And I want to double down on that challenge that you gave us, Enrique, because it is a very important challenge. Ogden City has one-third of the population are Hispanic, and that is more than 30,000 people. So what that means to me is that our city should be strategic and intentional in putting forth strategies and initiatives and programs and projects that are going to benefit this one-third of our population. And those things don't happen by accident, they happen by strategy and by hard work. And I also want to send that challenge to my colleagues, and to the mayor, and to Mark Johnson. And so we get an opportunity to have a lot of dialogue during our council meetings and outside of council meetings. And I recently had the opportunity to speak to the mayor and ask him if we could get together to have a conversation. And the, some of the comments, some of the things that I'd like to speak about are related to these very, these very topics around what else can we do to collaborate, to help further the lives of our Hispanic community. We need to, we need to pay attention to all community members. I am mindful of that. And we do, and we try, and we do the best we can. But as the Hispanic community being one-third of our population, we just cannot ignore that important fact. And as the only Hispanic council member in our body, I cannot ignore that either, and I cannot stop being vocal about it. So I'm very serious about this. I, again, to the students, more than anyone, thank you for coming, thank you for speaking, and congratulations. And you're in great hands with our friends at Weber State. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to speak. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Lopez. Any other comments from council members?
Sure, why not? Well, again, you know, congratulations and thank you all for coming. I'm really excited to be part of this council and administration that would provide the recognition for Hispanic Heritage Month. But more than that, just, I'm really excited about the news about the goal at Weber State. I've been hearing about that for a while, that we were gonna set some goals, and I'm really excited. And then also, congratulations on the grant, too. So that's really wonderful.
That's what I was gonna say. You know, your presentations touched my heart. I'm really happy that you're having these great moments and life moments, and making these strides. I appreciate you being here and making your presentations. It was very well done, and you presented yourselves very well. Thank you for, and congratulations on the grant. That's good news.
Yeah, I too echo. Thank you for being here. It is scary to be on that side sometimes and talk to us. I don't know why. And I actually love that you challenged us to, how can we help you accomplish that goal? And I think maybe even bringing it through our College Ten Initiative and really trying to work through, how can we help you? And in turn, you helping us, because I think there's a lot of work that we need to do as well. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I'd like to share a few things. Lately, I've been talking in two-minute spurts, so I'm looking for a clock here, so give me some slack. I don't remember all your names, so if I point to you or look at you, I'm talking to you. I truly respect the steps that you're taking. We own a business on 30th and Monroe, and a lot of the people that come in there are Hispanic youth. And I ask them a lot, what are you gonna do? What's next? And, you know, a lot of them go to work or start work, or a lot of them, some of them go to the ATC, and I ask about Weber State, are you gonna go to Weber State? And, and I can't remember your name, but there is a bridge there. There are people there with a desire, and there's a wonderful institution there, ready to teach you. And there are steps that need to be taken, and it's, it's hard to have such a wonderful institution and community partner as Weber State right there, when it seems so far away for some people. And I'm so thankful that there are people here willing to bridge that gap, willing to make it an easier transition. And so I see these kids, sorry to me, your kids. I see these young people, rock stars, as you recalled earlier, and I think you have so much potential, and you offer so much to the future. And I'm so thankful that there are steps taken to help you. It's not often that you get to look back and think, this part, or this moment, or this decision changed my life, changed my family's life, changed an entire generation's life. And you're doing that, and that's exciting. And I'm glad that I get to be a part of it, I get to witness it tonight, and I'm thankful that I get to watch it as a community member. And I'm excited about what you can bring and what you bring to our community. So thank you all. I wish you all nothing but the best. And President Mortensen, thank you for your leadership and for everything that you do, not only for Weber State, but for our community also. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Romo, for being here.
I was thinking we could set up a computer in your station there, and then I can come over there, we can help people enroll. That's a whole one.
Again, I look at these young people, and I think, and, you know, they're, oh, I don't know if I'm gonna go to college, or I'd like to go to college, but there's so many things that discourage them, right? It is, there's finances, there's, sometimes there's a language barrier, sometimes there's this. And I want to shake them and say, I don't speak one word. Well, I say capaza. I know how to say capazo, or whatever that is. I can say that. And bien, I know bien. But I don't speak a lot of Spanish. And I think you speak fluent Spanish, and you speak English, right there. You're so much farther ahead than a lot of people in our community. And I just wish that people would realize the talent and the skill set that you all have, and the wonderful members of our community that you all can be. And it's exciting. It really is exciting. So thank you all. Sorry.
Chair?
Yes.
If I may, I really, really appreciate your comments. Thank you so much. You know, it goes with the occasion that, along with your comments, and along with the occasion, that I'd like to share something with all of you. It probably takes me, it'll probably take me just maybe three minutes, but I think it's important. This is, I'm gonna read something, it's a poem, but I'm only gonna read a part of it, and this talks a little bit about how the Hispanic community feels, how we feel living here, in this wonderful country that we love, that has given us so much opportunity, and yet, there is so much work to be done. And this poem is called "I Am Joaquin." This is, I'm gonna read something, it's a poem, but I'm only gonna read a part of it and these. This talks a little bit about how. The Hispanic community feels, how we feel living. Here in this wonderful country that we love, that, that has given us so, so much opportunity and yet there is so much work to be done. And this, this poem is called I Am Joaquin and it's a very long poem, but I'm only gonna read a small part of it. And, and the poem, the poem says. I am Joaquin, lost in a world of confusion, caught up in a world of Anglo society, confused by, by the rules, scorned by attitudes, suppressed by manipulation and destroyed by modern society. My fathers have lost the economic battle and won the struggle of cultural survival. And now I must choose between the paradox of victory of the spirit despite physical hunger or to exist in the grasp of American social neurosis. Fertilization of the soul and a full stomach. Yes, I have come a long way to nowhere. Unwillingly dragged by the most first technical industrial diet called progress. An Anglo success, I look at myself, I watch my brothers, I shed tears of sorrow, I sow seeds of hate. I withdraw to my safety within the circle of life. I am Cuauhtémoc, proud and noble leader of men, king and empire civilized beyond the dreams. Of the Gachupin Cortez, who also is the blood, the image of myself. I am the Maya prince, I am Nezahualcóyotl, great leader of the Chichimecas. And then I go on to the last part of it because otherwise I'll stay here for too long and it says. And in all the fertile, the fertile farmlands, the barren plains, the mountain villages, smokes near cities, we start to move. La raza, mexicano, español, latino, chicano, or whatever I call myself, I look the same, I feel the same, I cry and sing the same. I am the masses of my people and I refuse to be absorbed, I am Joaquin. The odds are great, but my spirit is strong. My faith unbreakable, my blood is pure. I am a saint, prince and Christian Christ, I shall endure, I will endure. One day I hope I get a chance to share more of this with all of you, thank you.
Thank you. I, I wanted, there's just one more thanks I wanted to give out and thank you for buying that young man a tie. That, that was a big deal, thank you, that, big time, but thank you all for being here, thank you. Please, come on up. I can remember that one.
Hello, my name is Fernando Martinez, the son of Fernando Martinez, a Mexican immigrant. My father. Didn't speak any English, I've encountered many barriers. Well, and I am a first-generation student and I'm trying to navigate my way through the university, there aren't very many men, Hispanic men, or people who look similar to myself and who are able to relate to me and develop group heart or, that's the correct word. I find, I feel isolated because there's not many people who are similar to myself and I have an awful lot of questions that I. Well, the college system is extremely convoluted to myself because I, I don't know which questions to ask or where to go or who to speak to or, like I said, my father, he worked. Making pallets, which isn't very productive in society or a high social standing and I'm trying to navigate and I'm trying to further my life by acquiring knowledge and, and, and learning and speaking to other individuals and. Developing my ability to articulate myself and to communicate with others in the community and. Well, I find it extremely difficult and so luckily I encountered Monica Rodriguez, who was associated with the Ballet For Clorico, which is a Hispanic community and I was able to join them and, and become more familiar with my Mexican culture. And was able to relate with the individuals within that. Club and so, yeah. But I'm trying to navigate my way and I'm glad I have some resources and the individuals who are similar to myself. Thank you.
Thank you. You left one up here at the podium. Thank you. Are we okay? Thank you all for being here and thank, and thank you, Dr. Romo, for the work you're doing, thank you.
Thank you for everything, appreciate it. Take him out somewhere.
We have one item listed under common consent, it's the consideration of the reappointment of Tamara Glover and Joseph Simpson and the appointment of Kevin Cottrell to the Records Review Board, this is a voice vote.
Do you want a motion first?
Oh, please, yes, sorry.
Chair, make a motion that we adopt the common consent agenda and the items listed as they are listed.
Thank you, we have a motion to adopt the item listed under common consent by Councilmember Hare and a second by, by Vice Chair White, this is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that passes. Next up, we have unfinished business, a communications plan for the proposed rezon at five fifty east, nine hundred north, and we have Ross Watkins here tonight.
It's pretty hard to follow up on that. That was pretty cool. I have, this is way less exciting, but I have a communication plan for the rezon that we talked about last week at five hundred north, sorry, five fifty east, nine hundred north. You'll remember that this is a rezon request from R one six to R three to demolish church and build some townhomes, they proposed forty, just to jog your memory. This, this was extended at last week's meeting, which is different from tabling because tabling is to a date certain, extending is to work out the kinks and discuss further and bring it up at a later meeting, so the purpose of the communication plan is to let you know what happens next. This, this item will be, it is scheduled for next week's work session on October nineteenth. We are, I am communicating actively with the petitioner and everyone that wrote down their email address last week, so, so that they can, you know, participate, be involved, come and listen to the work session. And based off of kind of guidance or the feeling we get from the meeting next week in the work session. You know, it may need to go to further consideration with the planning office to develop a different site plan or a conditional overlay or whatever that is, so we don't know exactly what will happen after next week. Another point to consider is that. Another way that extending is different from tabling, when, when you table, you don't have to re-notice because it was, it was mentioned in the meeting when the next meeting will be, so when something's extended, whenever this comes back to a city council meeting, all the neighbors will be re-notified, so, so that they'll know to come back and on top of that, I'm, I'm talking to all of them, so people should be involved and that's, that's all that I have for the communication plan, are there any questions for me?
Nope.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, thanks Ross. Okay. Next up is public comments. This is a chance to address the council regarding any concerns or topics, please state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
All right, my name is Toni Renee, I present. As we, the people of the United States of America, unincorporated, Toni Renee is an unincorporated person, my lawful person is an American state national, so which means I am not a federal, territorial or municipal corporate citizen or employee. The reason why I'm here today is because I want to petition for redress because I have two cases with Weber County regarding my private property and a trespass with regard to the trust or the constitution. Basically, they're trying to make me responsible for the, the corporate statutes and codes, whereas only corporate citizens are responsible for those corporate statutes and codes. And so what I'd like to do is work with the administration to resolve those issues so that these trespasses of domain no longer take place in our courts and that we won't have any extortion or fraud or misad, maladministration with regard to these legal statuses, essentially, does that make sense? I was trying to get that like as sweet, as simple, to the point without going off. So what I need to know is who do I need to talk to, what do I need to do, is there, you know, paperwork that needs to be done, I know that this is the administrative officer right here. I just, I just had my property, which is a private conveyance, being misunderstood as, or misidentified as a vehicle and, and so right now I'm going through the court process with the courts, but the courts refuse to look at my documents because they don't meet the standards of criminal procedure and I've tried to explain to the judge that because I don't have a legal obligation, that I don't have to submit any documents that conform to the statutes and codes and so this is my first time going through this process, I, I don't know what to expect, but all I know is that I want to be able to resolve it so that we don't have the issue anymore and that everybody's happy. So that's pretty much it. Is there anything that I need to do besides just stay in contact with Mark?
I, I think that's your best bet.
Okay. All right, well, I thank you, I appreciate you guys' time and for hearing me. Thank you so much.
Okay. Any other public, from anyone in the chambers? We've got a couple hands raised online, so we'll go ahead and take those, looks like Heath Sato is, has his hand raised first, so go ahead Heath, the time is now yours.
Hey, guys. It was good to see some of you the other night at the, the city council debates. Heath Sato, Ogden resident. Listening to the public comments that last week's city council was heartbreaking, as the mayor said no less than four times in his own comments. I fully agree with the mayor's assessment that the situation at the border of Sladeville is indeed heartbreaking. We went out there the next day after, after last week's city council and to, to look for ourselves, I would ask anyone unfamiliar with it to go take a look, it, it's worse than I imagined, a place that once had beautiful mountain views and morning sunshine now literally feels like the inside of a cold, dark prison, it's horrifying. If I would ever consider living, it, indeed, it's, it's heartbreaking. Where the mayor and I have part opinion on this topic is his assessment that because this was something agreed upon before he became mayor, that there is literally nothing we can do besides schedule meetings for them to yell at him. Many of you say that other cities should be taking on more burden of supplying housing that's affordable, but how many of you think they should work with us at all when we're willing to destroy their communities for our own profit? The city of Ogden would be bankrupt without the money we get from our partnership with Boyer and the BDO, that area town and development that happens there keeps us afloat as a city, we all know it, every promise we have, we pay for it with BDO money. As such, the expansion that was agreed upon years ago, the expansion that is ruining the lives of the people along that stretch of road is our responsibility. To not do anything about this is accepting blood money from the past here and now, the city of Ogden ruined the lives of these people for profit, we will be experiencing direct financial benefit of the city from the destruction of a neighbor's quality of life, I don't know about all of you, but to my mind, that is immoral. The Swift Building was contaminated decades ago by a local family that got wealthy partly by using that building as a toxic chemical dump and the city decided that even though it wasn't our fault, it was the right thing to do to take on the millions and costs and liability of cleaning up that site. For the good of our community, I would argue here that even though it won't benefit a wealthy family, writing this wrong is, is as best as we can still do. We need to determine how much harm that community is suffering because of something that profits Ogden directly and compensate them accordingly, I'll leave the details up to you, but I'll say again, even if we might be able to legally get away with doing nothing, doing nothing about this would be immoral at best. Thanks for listening, I, I hope you all consider the moral path on this issue, good night.
Thank you. Next, we have Angel Castillo. And as soon as we get the clock figured out, we'll listen to, we'll have, we'll have Angel speak to us. Okay, I think we're ready, go ahead, Angel, the time is now yours.
Great, thank you so much, good evening, Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. I'd like to thank the city council for doing what is needed with regards to communication and allowing people access to these meetings, right now, for example, I've been able to listen to the work session from four o'clock on, while I am putting my garden to bed, pulling out tomatoes and bringing that and, and it's because I've had such a really difficult work week that I put this off and I wasn't able to do it over the weekend, so it's things like this that help people stay engaged and you say that it's completely your mission to make sure that everything is as accessible as possible and you're transparent and I, and I applaud you for what you've done with streaming the meetings and, and let's just take a moment for Brandon Garside, he's amazing. I know several people who listen to the podcast version when they can in between work, I appreciate the summary in case you don't have time to listen to everything, you can get the high points and the fact that the links are available on Facebook in a very timely manner and you don't have to look hard for them, to be quite honest, it's much easier to find the agenda on your Facebook page than it is on the website, so I'm deeply appreciative of that and that goes in the plus column and so then I'd like to move to the delta portion of the column of where we can do a little bit better. We, right now, no one can attend a planning meeting virtually, no one can attend a diversity commission meeting virtually, no one can attend a sustainability meeting virtually and those are held in the middle of the day where we traditionally have access to people who are working nine-to-five jobs, that don't have the luxury of their own business or being a consultant, so I'd ask that you hold the rest of those committees to your standard because it makes no sense that they're not broadcast and the city council workroom is set up for video and chambers is set up for video, so I'd, I'd like to be able to see the rest of our committees be as accessible as you have made the city council. To our general population and to be quite honest, y'all are doing a much better job than Weber County does, while they do have Zoom access to their meetings, it, it doesn't have the video quality, the cutback, nor the synopsis, so, you know, good on you for showing the county up and I'd like you to please make the rest of the meetings that you want public to participate in more accessible, thank you so much.
Thank you. And we have Betty Sawyer with her hand raised. Go ahead, Betty, the time is now yours.
Thank you and good evening, everyone, I wanted to ask in regard to the Marshall White Community Center, where we are in that process and whether or not any budget numbers have been added to coincide with a couple of plans that came from the architectural firm that you ended up contracting with to design possible buildings for the Marshall White Center rebuild, I have not seen any budget figures for the projects and wondering if you've received budget figures so we know what we're working with and where we may be able to identify possible funding to support the rebuild, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other further comment. Any comments from administration?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Any comments from council members?
Chair?
Yes.
Oh, no, excuse me, never mind, never mind, sorry.
Okay. As far as I know, we haven't seen any budget numbers for the Marshall White Center.
I think there was some estimates in the thirty-five to forty million dollar range for what was proposed.
proposed. But as you know, we have, the council has sent a letter, that was just for the proposal that came forward for reuse as a recreation center. But the council requested a letter to go to them for other options for reuse. And so that's kind of where we are in the process.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. No other council, council comments? Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Hare and a second by Councilmember Traburka to adjourn this meeting. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, that passes.